Good evening. Thank you for joining the Dearborn Board of Education School District for the City of Dearborn Board Study Session for Tuesday, March 21st. It is 5:36 PM. I will call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mosip?
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
President Thorpe?
Here. Next item.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. President Thorpe will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move forward with our agenda items today, I would ask Dr. Maleko to acknowledge an item.
Yes, unfortunately, it's on a sad note. We learned of a tragedy last week. A former student who passed away, and there is a vigil tonight at Etzel Ford. I know a lot of us would have been there, but we have the study session tonight for Jermaine Williams. And so our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. I did speak to his mother. I know the district has been in communication with the family for support. I spoke to Principal Hassan this afternoon, and I told her, you know, if, depending on the time, we may, some of us might go over, but she's going to mention that and again, just express that our condolences, thoughts and prayers on behalf of the board and the administration and the school district. So if we could take a moment of silence, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items to action who are assigned in by 5:40 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate any immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit and comments made to the board. We have one blue card. Nofila Hyder from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about infrastructure.
Good evening. This mic's not working.
It's on.
Is it on? Okay. I was hoping for citizen participation to be after the presentation because then we could really comment. Maybe we can keep that in mind for future study sessions. So basically, I just want to say that I've been to the meetings. Great presentations, but I didn't feel that they represented our city or our city's needs. I feel like they need to make more sense. We have buildings that need to go. For example, Lori Middle School. We have buildings that just need to be built, like a fourth high school. And I didn't feel that the presentations in the past that we viewed, you know, met those needs. So I'm hoping that maybe tonight's presentation would give us a little more insight on our actual needs for the district and then for the future again, maybe have citizen participation afterwards because I feel like this kind of stifles the citizens. We're going to say our point and then not be able to comment on what's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Discussion, the 30-year study update.
So I'll actually also respond to the comments. What we are expecting from today's meeting is to get a lot of information from Fielding in somewhat of a raw format. It's a lot of data, but there are not proposals or solutions or anything at this point. So we're just kind of taking it all in, and I'm expecting we're going to kind of drink from a fire hose on a lot of this stuff. As then it's continuing to evolve, then we'll be going out to the community for more feedback on items. But we'll talk a little bit more about that after we hear the first information here tonight. As we're going through the presentation, if you've got questions on things, let us know, and we will stop occasionally for any questions. Anything else before we turn it over? All right. Dr. Maleko?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wall to introduce the...
Thank you, President Thorpe, Dr. Maleko, and members of the Board of Education. I'm excited to hear that we're talking about infrastructure. As I stated in our last budget presentation, this is a big issue for us in the years to come. So we have engaged Fielding International to do this long-term study for us. And again, as to spoiler, as Mr. Thorpe said, no decisions have been made. We're just at the data gathering stage, and this is kind of setting the table for us to have more in-depth discussion about it as they present the data and their discussions that they found. So to my immediate left is James Seaman. He's the partner for Fielding International. And the principal that has been leading a lot of discussion and has done a great job is Jessica Stickler-Lipson. And with that, I'll turn it over to them, and they can go through the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. I'll just start out kind of giving a brief overview, a little bit about the work that we've been doing. And then I'm going to hand it over to Jesse here to get into more of the details of the data that we've been uncovering. Just a little background on us, and first of all, it's great to be back. We were here about a month and a half ago, and so great to be back here with you today. Just again, our background, Fielding International, we are a school design firm. This is all we do. We work on schools actually all over the world. We do, we have a studio that is based in Michigan. We're based in Ferndale. And so we're really passionate about this work and really excited about what we do here. So on the next slide, and I guess I can advance here too, this just shows our global perspective. We've worked in 50-plus countries. And so with having this kind of knowledge, it really does allow us to bring a lot of different perspectives to the table here. So as we get into developing scenarios for the district, you know, we can draw on a lot of different examples and case studies that we can share with you. So one thing I just wanted to kind of talk about here is just how we approach this work. It's really looking at it through this lens of a learning ecosystem. So it's not just about facilities and the infrastructure needs. It's also making sure that whatever work that you do in the, as a district here in the future with your, with your infrastructure, that it also aligns with your vision as a district, where you're going. And so a lot of the work that we've done with the town hall meetings, engaging the community, is really talking about that vision for the district and for the community here in the future. The other piece is also the educational program. And so we've been doing a lot of work with district leadership to really understand how is the educational program built out to support that vision. And so really, these three things need to be in alignment. So it's not just addressing, you know, facilities as far as what, you know, what's needed as far as maintenance and that, but really coming to, coming up with solutions that really look at all three of those things. And so what that might suggest is some things as far as possibilities of new schools, new opportunities, new ways to think about how schools could be organized. So that's part of the lens that we're looking at as we approach this work. And so a lot of that work that we did with engaging your community so far really dealt with, the first piece was really digging into that vision piece. Tonight, and last time when we were here about a month and a half ago, we shared with you some of that, those vision components. Tonight, we're going to get more into a lot of the data, and so there's a lot of kind of raw data that we're going to share with you tonight. So, you know, what is a master plan? Why do we do it? There's really these kind of four components to it. So the first is really to determine how many buildings are needed to support the projected population. So as part of the work that we did, there was a demographic study that was done that looked at your enrollment projections into the future. And so this work is to determine, you know, do you have enough capacity here? The next question is how can facility updates best support the shifting approaches to teaching and learning? And so this ties again to that vision. That's why we spend a lot of time really understanding what is the vision in the district here? Where is the district going? And that way, we can make sure that whatever updates you're doing are not just kind of, you know, fixing the facilities to make them safe, warm, and dry, but also to make them better suited for teaching and learning into the future. And then the next two questions, how do we ensure Dearborn Public Schools is prepared for future planning, growth, and change? It's really kind of related to that alignment piece. And then last, how do we provide equitable access to opportunities for all Dearborn Public Schools students? And so these are kind of the big overarching questions that we've been sort of back of mind as we've been approaching this work with the master plan. And really, you know, really, it's the purpose of this work. So our process, we are now in what we call Phase Two. We shared with you last time some of the findings from Phase One, which was really around the information gathering, that visioning piece. In Phase Two, you can see here kind of highlighted on the screen, the four and five is really the items that we're going to be sharing with you tonight, which is what we call a framework for making good decisions. So it's really, we've organized the data into a framework that allows you to, and it's really a transparent process that allows everybody to kind of see how, as we make decisions, how that ties to the data. And then the piece that we are working on, but we're not going to share tonight, we're not really at the point here, is developing scenarios to evaluate. So those are, that's currently under work, but that will be the next meeting that we have with you is to actually share with you actual scenarios. And a scenario really is, is just kind of an approach to how you can use this data, how you can use the master plan into the future. This work is a 30-year master plan, so it goes long into the future. And, you know, during that time, you have to really think of a master plan as more of a roadmap moving forward. Because it takes a lot of time, there's going to be changes and detours along the way. So that's why what we're really providing you with is a framework for making good decisions because we know that things will change as you move forward. And so we will share during our next meeting, two scenarios we're working on, and it's really to show a spectrum, sort of from kind of the status quo to also to what could be more innovative and possible. And that way, those can be communicated then with your, with your community to get feedback. And then it may be, the ultimate decision may be something that lies in the middle or maybe leaning to one side or the other. So we want to give you that full spectrum of ways that you can use the master plan to actually move forward with. And so that's what we're currently working on and we'll be sharing that at the next time in that, at our next meeting, and that will really kind of conclude our work at this stage. Yep, next slide. So agenda for tonight, where we are, which just kind of touched on that. I'll then turn it over to Jesse, who will talk about what we heard so far. She will share with you the facilities dashboards. We actually created this dashboard that makes it really easy for anybody to look at it and kind of sort the data and look at it in a meaningful way. We also have an interactive map that shows visually how the data maps out throughout the district, and then we'll talk about next steps. And again, feel free to stop. We'll try to pause occasionally through this. We have several slides to get through here, but feel free to interject at any time. Objectives for tonight, really two things. We want to sort of ground this group in what we have learned, so the data that we've collected. And mainly, the reason why we want to share it with you now before we get into actually scenarios or recommendations is we want to make sure you understand the data that we're looking at and understand that, see if it makes sense with you or makes sense to you, and if you have any questions, so we can kind of clarify that before we actually move to actual recommendations and scenarios. So we really want to go through that, make sure that there's a common understanding on that. Also, our methodology for how we've collected the data and how we're looking at that and analyzing that. And that, you know, that really becomes that basis for the master plan. And then the second piece is previewing this interactive map that's been created. This can serve as a public communication tool, and so we want to get your feedback on that as well. And it really is a very transparent, shows all the data, anybody can see it, and it's a very, you know, it's an interactive tool for that purpose, for communication. So here's just a timeline of kind of where we are. We had shared this with you before, and this is, I know, publicly on your website here. We're at the end of the process, however, because we're working on the scenarios now, this is actually going to be extended out about a month or two from the March deadline here. So we're here at the end, basically. We're sharing with you the data and how that's all organized. And then really, in the next month or two is when we'll be wrapping up our, this current phase of work with you, which is then showing those two scenarios of how to take that master plan and how you could use it in two different ways. So with that, I'll just pause for a minute before I turn it over to Jesse to see if anybody has any, any questions about what we're going to cover tonight.
Trustee Barry? I like the way you phrase that framework of making good decisions. You have options, make decisions, and go like that. I attended a couple of your forums. I'm excited about this. What I notice is you're very engaged with the community and community members. That's amazing. I mean, that's, 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 the majority of our constituents, that's what they're looking for. They want to hold us accountable, but they want real facts, you know, the data. So this data that you pointed out here, I went through a report, I've done some homework on your company. You do amazing work, so I'm really truly looking forward to this. Most important thing is hit us with the truth. I mean, tell us, you know, don't tell us what we want to hear. Tell us what you're seeing, and that's what I'm looking forward to. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Go on.
Okay, well, we're glad to hear that. So thanks for that feedback and thanks for attending those sessions. We felt that you were engaged, and we have fun doing it, so we're happy, happy to be here. So we're going to start actually with a little bit of what we heard while we were here on the ground. And so you can also be a little bit of a mirror and a temperature check to make sure that we've got that right. Because this is, this adds to, adds to the data, right? It's another layer of data in terms of what we, what we've heard from the community. So some of this you've seen before, and then some of this is new information. So just from the Future of Learning workshops back in the fall, just a few numbers. So 29 focus groups, 200 students were engaged, and so 462 total workshop participants. We were really, really happy about that turnout. We did have a survey, so we had 1,830 participants. We have a little bit more information on that that we can share with you tonight in response to some questions that we got last time that we were here. And then we had 33 total schools visited, so we were able to get out and talk to the school leaders and walk each school. So last time we were here, which was between the last time we were, we saw you and today, we were able to conduct four town halls and a focus group. And so we had 43 total participants in those town halls and 33 participants in the focus And so to date, we've counted 2401 total stakeholder participants. So we're happy with that number, and we hope that you're pretty pleased with that too. So that's what we're using moving forward for now. So what we've heard. So you can see on the screen, so we really feel that there is a strong alignment between all of our engagements in terms of the vision and the priorities. They've been consistent, so that's really exciting. We don't always see that. So that's heartening moving forward in terms of what the future of Dearborn might look like and what to plan for. There are knowledgeable existing barriers that are getting in the way of achieving that vision, and so that's great because that's why we're here. There's also a desire to balance tradition and innovation, so I think you've heard that from us before, and we'll continue to talk about that moving forward. And people are just excited about this opportunity, excited that this work's going on, and excited to see what that might look like. So we wanted to share a little bit about how we got to what the priorities for the future of learning might look like. And so one huge aspect of that were the students. So we shared that we heard from 200 students, and we heard a lot of that through discussion and then also through student drawings. So these were some of the most fun engagement sessions that we had. So here you can see little clip-its of some post-its and then also some of these drawings. So we heard that students wanted space to breathe. We heard a lot of feedback and want for hands-on learning and then also real-world learning And then what are the, what are additional priorities for future of learning? We heard the want and need for differentiation. So again, you can see some drawings that start to show what these are, and we were able to extract these themes from these drawings themselves and from the conversation with the students and how they described their drawings and what they were looking for. So other themes were flexibility, variability, and agility. So survey findings. This is, this slide captures who we asked and who we heard from. So you can see there is a large response rate from parents or guardians, also instructional staff members, students, and then you can see on the list, we have community members, administrators, school board trustees, alumni, and then non-instructional staff members as well and administrators. So what were the top three skills to thrive in the future? So you can see the top three that rose to the top. Number one, critical thinking and analysis. Number two, reasoning and problem solving. And number three, creativity, originality, and initiative. Then the top three experiences that will help students build the skills they need for the future. Again, real-world application, hands-on activities, and then exploring different career opportunities within the community. So you can already start to see this cohesion and the similarities between the survey responses and the workshops. What are your community priorities for Dearborn Public Schools? Another question from the survey. Number one, safety. Number two, academic programming. And number three, functionality and comfort of the buildings. So big-picture takeaways, now we're moving on to the most recent engagement sessions that we held, the town hall and focus groups. And these were just within the last month, I believe. So first, we have that data-driven approach is important. We heard that that was critical and really leads us to why we're here today. So it's a good setup for our conversation over the next hour or two together. We also heard that transparency in the process is critical, so we're hoping to share ideas about that moving forward tonight, too. That there's a need for future engagement and communication, that the community wants to hear more, wants to hear what the data is showing. And then also just the third-party expertise holds a lot of weight for the community, too, so that they value people's perspectives. So we asked the community, how might we balance tradition and innovation? And we heard some interesting things that we didn't necessarily anticipate. So we heard that the namesake and culture of a school defines legacy and carries a lot of weight in addition to the physical facility. And the idea of historic significance of buildings and facilities is something we'll touch on today. And then we also heard that the community sees both value in innovation and tradition. So what you see on the screen is actually an exercise that we asked people to do, where we asked people to put a post-it note on how they, how they valued innovation and tradition, if they thought about it as sort of a spectrum or a like or scale. Here you see excitement for, so just top items that people were excited about related to the future of teaching and learning, so collaboration, innovation, and meeting the needs of more students, health and wellness, so fun and exciting PE elements, and inclusivity, and updates, and then existing facility resources. And then other questions around facility resources. So we asked about what resources people are currently using and what resources people are most excited about, that they could imagine using in the future. So how could Dearborn Public Schools contribute to resources in the community that people would use during school hours and then off-school hours? So before we move on to the facility dashboard, is anything here that you see surprise you or are there any questions around the engagement to date?
I've got a question going back, I think, two slides. The innovation and the tradition?
Yeah.
When we say that the takeaway is that the namesake and culture of a school defines legacy and carries a lot of weight in addition to the physical facility, what does that mean?
Great question. So that means, we heard a lot like, for example, Fortson, I'll just use Fortson as an easy example, that the idea of being a Fortson tractor is, is one thing, and then the building is another, but that the two weren't necessarily connected, that you could be tied to one and separate yourself from the other. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Barry?
On the same slide, that caught me by surprise, to be honest with you, and you just, the way you just explained it makes sense. Yes, I thought like the post-it notes would lean, would lean more towards tradition compared to innovation, so I would imagine that's, at these forums, were these mostly parents? Did this exercise?
That's a good question. I feel like it was, it was probably mostly parents. So on the left is innovation.
Yes.
Yeah. I would say there were mostly, mostly parents. I don't have the number breakdown, but I think they were.
Okay.
There was some staff, too, but mostly parents.
Yeah, some staff, but mostly parents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Mosip, did you have a question?
Yeah, on the big-picture takeaways, there were two items about needing future engagement and communication, and then holding a lot of weight, if there is a third-party expertise. Can you elaborate more on those two points? What is the new way of communicating?
Yeah, so the, the need for future engagement and communication just touches on, excuse me, additional, additional engagement around this process. So as it keeps going, so I think actually, President Thorpe, you set it up really well. So as scenarios are created and as what we learn from the data surfaces, that, that the community wants an opportunity to weigh in more and, after they understand and digest what it is, to voice their opinion more.
I think just to add to that, too, the, once, when we do get into scenarios and share scenarios, I think this is a very, I guess what we're finding is this is a very, solutions are going to be very complex here because this is a very, I mean, you're looking long-term, it's a large district, it's a 30-year plan, so it's going to really require a lot of communication with your community to get feedback. Also, too, with a 30-year plan, it's, a plan that you create is not going to be a set-in-stone plan that's going to just solve every, you know, solve all the problems over the next 30 years. You're going to have to have constant communication with your community as you move through, as you step through the plan. It's going to be a multiple, you know, multiple steps to kind of get to the end here. And so really, what we've identified is that there, you know, the community wants to be a part of this, is what we've heard. And so you really do need to, our recommendation basically is saying that you really need to continue to engage your community throughout this process.
Trustee Petlicoff?
In the manner, excuse me, in the manner of engaging with the community, a lot of times you will have, and you did mention that you had a lot of the same people showing up for town halls and representing, and they might be the same individuals who came to the stakeholder sessions and might also have taken the surveys. But when it comes time to put something on a ballot referendum and have people vote, you will get a lot of people who will then come out and say, I knew nothing about this. I didn't get a chance to weigh in. I, I, I had, I had an opinion as well. How are we going to, and it's always a problem, no matter who you're, what's on the ballot and what, and what initiatives you're trying to communicate to a wide variety of community members. How do we try to help offset some of those? Because sometimes you'll hear the most invested people coming out over and over and over again, so you get one perspective of a vision, but it might not realistically represent what's going to happen when you put, put a decision out there for everyone to weigh in on.
Yep. I'll start, and Jesse, you can jump in. So yeah, everything you were saying is very similar to what we experience in many communities. And so, you know, through this process, we can only work with, you know, who comes out, the engagement. We do try to triangulate that with other, you know, so we did go into the schools, you know... know, we, we try to look at things from different perspectives, so that way we can try to get a objective look at it. But obviously, we can't hear from every, every person. And, and you're absolutely right, when, when you do have a ballot out there, you know, there's going to be a lot of people that will come out at that point. And so what we do find is that it's important to make sure that you have, you are transparent with the process that got to that point. So that's why we really talked, talked, or we want to share with you this framework for making good, good decisions. And so Trustee Barry, as you brought that up before, we try to put in there, really, it's, it's, a lot of it is raw data, a lot of it is, you know, just kind of the, the factual information that we're, we're taking in. But it is a way to start to prioritize things. And so what we do find is that when it does come time where you're actually making a decision and asking the community to vote on this, there's going to be continued engagement that you'll need to do and to be able to listen to their concerns and then talk through how decisions are made and talk through the data. But having that is, is important. If you don't have that, and you haven't gone through the process, then it's a little bit harder to be able to, you know, explain or convince, you know, the community why you're proposing a certain solution. So it, it does take time. There's no way to, you know, magically go through it. You have to just really work through that process.
Would it be wise to, to start engaging with the variety of ways of communicating so that you reach the other population that may not be in the school buildings themselves through press releases or something like that, so that they can understand that what's coming?
Yeah, I think the next step is, as we have actual, so right now, we're at this kind of raw data standpoint, and I think if you communicate that, people can interpret that in many different ways. We will be completing our work with scenarios, which are just options of how you can move forward with the master plan. I think at that point, as we are suggesting, is that you do need to continue to do engagement before you consider going, you know, going out for a bond referendum. So you, I, there does need to be a phase of community engagement that you continue to do. And at that point, I, we would recommend doing things where you try to go out and reach those members that, you know, the voices that we haven't heard so far, to, to share that. And those are things that really, you know, we, in a sense, are kind of an outside perspective, which is good from an objective point of view. But when you are engaging your community directly, really, those are, you know, that's the work that, you know, you know your community better than, than we would directly as far as how to communicate them, how to communicate with them. So, so yes, it's very important to, to have that engagement, and that, we, we are definitely recommending that type of engagement.
I think, just to underscore that point, I think you're asking all the right questions, and, and you need to do just, just what you said.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Barry.
Trustee Petlicov makes a very valid point. Previously, I mean, we are in tune with the community, we know what the decision-makers will approve or not approve, and we kind of start going backwards. I don't think this is going to be on fielding, this is going to be on us and administration moving forward. This is the data. I mentioned in this room, probably a few weeks ago, that by the time some of this comes to fruition, I know I won't be around 30 years from now, but it's going to be up to us to make some brave decisions. What's in the best interests of students? What's best interests of the district? And what's in the best interest of the investors in this community? Then it's going to be upon us to go out and sell that final product. What did this, what the, what the, what the voters do, we can't control. But we need to come up with, what is truly, when we say students, students first, what is truly in the best interests of students? And this is the information we'll be gathering, then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a 30-year study. None of us, I don't think, will be sitting in these seats in 30 years. And I'm, part of me thinks like 10 years from now, is anyone going to remember that we did this study that says that, hey, this is what we expect life expectancy to be of some of these buildings 20 years down the road? We'll see. Continue on.
Okay. So in the spirit of the 30-year study, one, one element that we're most excited about is this idea of a facilities dashboard, which is what we're calling this framework for making good decisions. And at the most basic level, it's really a database that is a collection of, of metrics. It's key metrics, and it's really where all the data sits. But it's being used, or we hope that it's being used now, and then hopefully in the future, as a tool to help understand the needs of priorities. So how we might determine which facilities have the greatest need, looking at all of the buildings in the district, and then scope. So how might we determine the scope of work needed for each building? So what that means is, you know, renovation, or an addition, or replacement at the school-by-school level. And, and we're excited about the power of this, because it's all, again, grounded in this idea of data. So this will, this portion of, of the presentation is going to be like drinking from a fire hose, so I'll just set the stage with that. So feel free to jump in with questions as you have them, and we'll try to be intentional about taking time to pause. But you'll, you all have this, so hopefully you can see it and review it and follow up with questions if you have them afterwards.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes, sorry.
I'm just, I'm glad that you said that, because when I went through the presentation earlier, I grasped everything, everything made a lot of sense. When I got to this, I was dumbfounded. So I was hoping that you would spend a lot of time and explain this, because this is just a lot, and I wasn't sure what it all meant. So thank you.
Yeah, it is a lot, for sure, and we acknowledge that. So we'll do our best. And I also want to be cognizant, I don't want to, you know, belabor a point or spend, take up too much time, so if you want me to speed up, or I don't want to, you know, speed through it, so, you know, just, this is a two-way conversation.